Start to be in order, please.
Mr. Brewley.
Here.
Mrs. Escalante.
Here.
Dr. McFadden.
Here.
Mr. Monk.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here.
And Mrs. Jarrett.
Here.
We're going to establish this pleasure of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God who has saved America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is a portion of our meeting where we have citizen comments. Please address your comments to the Chair of the Board. Please state your name and address and limit yourself to three minutes. Are there any citizen comments?
Hello. Carl Hay, 540 Clinton Road Drive. The meetings, I'm sure, are looking closer to what they normally look like. So that tells me that the previous meeting, especially the ones that had students in them, were teachable moments. And so I was looking to what was being taught to my child by the school board because you guys are part of the school system, if I'm not mistaken. One of the first things I noticed is, in the line of questioning, we harped on student grades, which the teachers don't control unless they cheat. And that was 25 percent. And it was 33 percent of that 25 percent, which is roughly 8.3 percent of the overall judging of a teacher. So then, where were the questions about the other 91 percent of what the teachers were doing or were not doing? As I stated the first time I ever spoke, my grandmother was a teacher for 50 years. Most of the time she had great results. Sometimes she didn't. That was depending on a lot of different factors. So as the grandson of a teacher, as well as the brother of a professor at Ohio State, it's like, what message were we sending to our children? Next thing I noticed was that we were talking about procedures, which nobody really seemed to know the procedures on, how people were being judged or what they were supposed to be being judged on. I would have assumed that at least you guys would have had maybe a paper in front of you kind of explaining the stuff as to what our teachers get judged on, what our principal get judged on. That would just be, I don't know, good organization from either a business or an organization. And then demeanor. Positions of power have nothing to do with size, so acting like somebody can't be intimidating is ridiculous. And then laughing when somebody's expressing themselves. When our children would get in trouble for that? If a teacher was talking to them or someone in a position of respect? Or any of us? If my son laughed while I was talking to him, I would take a serious issue with that. I don't appreciate that being talked to my son because when we left, that was one of the questions on the way home. Why is she laughing? I get in trouble for that, Daddy? Why would I get in trouble for something that adults do that's stupid? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional citizen comments? Are there any additional citizen comments? Seeing they're being done, we'll go on to the next item. The consent agenda. You're for a motion to approve the consent agenda under item A, approval of minutes for March 20, 2019. Regular meetings, special meeting April 11, 2019. Letter B, MT-CPS, parent volunteer for parent advisory council at MISD. Background information, parent representation, and attached with the items for that background information for that parent volunteer. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Doc. Before we take a motion to approve the minutes, I'd like to amend a minute. If you go to page six, under action items, item six, Business Committee, we have some adjustments we need to do. Under B, it says, "Moved by member Walker." Ms. Walker was not here that day. Under item A, we need to add Teresa Jarrett under item A. She was present that day. And I recall her...
She didn't vote.
She didn't vote?
No. It was a missed call.
Okay. Okay. All right. And if you go to the As, the As have Janine Walker in there. She, again, she wasn't here. And then, the As do not have Mr. Brewley or Mr. Rickman in there.
Ms. Joy, you got those corrections? Duly noted. So there's a motion to amend the consent agenda with the items that Mr. Monk pointed forward. Secretary, you got those amendments written down? Those will be added to the consent agenda? Are there anything else that needs to be added to the consent agenda? Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Still waiting for a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Escalante. I will second it. Seconded by Dr. McFadden. Consent agenda, motion to approve by Ms. Escalante. Seconded by myself, Dr. McFadden. Are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda, item number five? Seeing they're being done, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carry. Action items, item six, Business Committee, A, approval of bills for payment. Let's hear it from the Business Committee. Ms. Escalante, anything to say about this?
No. We met, I don't have my planner with me, I apologize, last Tuesday at 9:30. It was myself, Ms. Walker, and Superintendent. And we went through all of the bills and everything looked good. So there's nothing, unless anybody has questions.
Mr. Monk?
I was reading through the minutes, and I believe Ed had brought it up, that, and I was interested in it too, that actually I was to have Ms. Davis put together a report on how much money we spent on SOT and snowmobiles.
Yeah. I'm still gathering the information, but I will get that to you though.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Brewley?
Go.
Okay. Ms. Jarrett? Good?
I'm good.
All right. As action items, we need a motion to approve, item number six, Business Committee approval of bills for payment.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Escalante, seconded by Ms. Jarrett. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing they're being done, call it roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes. Motion carry. Action item number seven, Personnel Report, A Employee Non-Renewal Recommendation.
Yes. Yes, thank you. This is one that's concerning the data director position. With that, we discussed this back in March. And because of financial reasons, we are streamlining that position and it doesn't require an administrative level. So I had asked the Board to not renew that contract at an administrative level, and it will be redone as another employee position. That's a non-administrative. And I did contact the person in that position, and they understand that it will not be an administrative level next year. And you do have a resolution before you, that was crafted by legal.
Any additional questions on that?
So from our understanding, just to make sure it's clear for, and also for the public, we are eliminating this position because of budget reasons.
Yes.
Not because of personnel. It just so happened that that's a position that we need to vote on a contract, but that position is being eliminated because of budget reasons.
And reorganized. So we will have a data person, but it will not be an administrative level. And tri-county-wide, we were paying the highest for that position when we compared it to other districts doing the same thing.
So the position is being eliminated, the duties are being streamlined, and they're not going away. It's going to be distributed by different individuals in the district. Okay? Bottom line on that. The resolution, do we need to read that resolution?
No, we don't really. Just make sure that someone moves on it. That's what I have to...
Item number seven was the action item, we need to make a motion on this. Personnel report, ploy, not renewed?
Yes, sir. So we don't need to have a motion on that?
No, we do need to. We just don't need to read...
The resolution.
That resolution because that is for the...
Would it be appropriate, I'll move the motion if you need to do it?
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Moved by Mr. Brewley. Do we have a second?
All right.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Second? Okay. All right. Moved by Mr. Brewley, seconded by Mr. Rickman. Any additional questions or comments about the motion on the floor? Seeing they're being done, please call the roll.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Motion carry. Action item number eight, Policy Committee. We have a slew of policies for second reading. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, sir. I'll make this short and sweet. I'm moved to submit the policies under item eight, A, 1 through 10, as listed in the Board's agenda for second reading and adoption. And the majority of these policies are state and federal mandated, so it's not like we really have a choice. Just make note, policy 5610.01 was rescinded. And I move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Ms. Escalante. Is there any questions or additional comments about the motion on the floor? Let it be known that these policies are being approved for second reading due to the fact that it's state and federal mandate. And as we know, a lot of things that we cannot do in this district is because of state and federal mandates, or there's some that circumvent the ideals of moving forward, or some of the ideals are just going forward. It's moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Ms. Escalante. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes. Motion carry. Formational items. Item number nine, Business Committee.
All right. We did meet on last Wednesday. I'm sorry, last Tuesday, as Ms. Escalante said. We went over all of the financials and the PO listings, and everything was found to be in order. And if anyone has any questions or comments concerning the information that's in your
Thank you for the list, the five-year list. I appreciate that. Just for me, that's easy for me to follow along, so I appreciate it. Although it's small, I can still read it. We've got my readers on, so...
Okay, good.
Any additional discussions about the Business Committee, open purchase order listing, financial reports, E-debt report, contract listing, facilities priority listing? Mr. Monk?
Contract listing.
Yes, sir.
Just want to touch on that. We look like we have a slew of contracts that are coming due in the month of June. I know the month of June is always tight for us. We have budget amendments, you know, getting all that financial stuff. We on track for all, looking at Trune Law, Nunley Heard, Athletic Director, Behavior Specialist, Independent Contract Nurse-Pohaw, Financial Advisor, Architectural Consultants.
With the, yes, we are, the majority of these are contract folks that we use during their school year. When the Business Committee gets together in the month of May, we would discuss that because we did have a, we had an RFP that was sent out, and so we'll discuss that...
And the RFP was for...
Legal.
Legal?
Legal services.
Okay.
Yes. And for Nunley Heard and MacArthur, that is the local firm that we're using to handle the property.
Okay.
So that's what that one is for. So we don't have a contract per se, we just use them on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
So that's what that one is for.
I see we've got chart wells, too. How are we coming along with chart?
Yes. I'm waiting on the state to finalize. I have to send all of that information to them, so I'm waiting on them to send me some information. I should have really gotten it today. So I'm waiting on them, and then, once they approve it, then I bring it to the Board and we publish it to see who would be bidding on our food services for the year.
IT services, who is that?
That's Robin.
Robin. No, that's what I thought.
Yes, sir. And even with Triple R, they handle our E-rate. So that's only on an as-needed basis, so, and that's why you see that. But we don't do a whole lot of business with them. They check in like three times a year to make sure that if there are any grants out there that we can apply for, they do that, handle that piece for us. Let's see. And, yeah, I think that's it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Monk. Facilities priority listing and calendar at glance. Mr. Brewley?
I appreciate the fact that the listings are in here for repairs. Where is, and I may be just missing it myself, where are the window repairs to the old, where's that listed?
They haven't come out yet to give us an estimate. We just got the one, well, we just had someone come out yesterday looking at the roof because it's been wet, so they don't, they have to fit us in.
Could we place that in there but without a cost estimate?
Yes, absolutely.
So we know that it's in process?
Yes.
And then, the pool in general, where is, what am I missing that they...
It's a, that one is in a combination of places. Let's see. It's on 251, it would be the second page of all of this stuff.
251.
Yeah, they're in blue, highlight near the bottom.
High school pool sand filter?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just think that people should be aware of a couple of facts when looking at this. Number one, we've done our best to try and prioritize anything to be fixed within the school district. And we're getting to the point financially where our budget, I will expect, to be in balance through the great efforts of the Superintendent, who serves as both Superintendent and Financial Director for the school district. But people need to take note that the physical plant that we're in here needs some repairs and that the day is soon approaching when we will no longer be able to push those off, which we have done in an effort to reach financial stability. But there's going to be a need, and that need should be looked on as a community need because whether or not your particular student goes here, or whether or not your particular student graduated from here a long time ago, the investment we have as a community to these facilities will become not unless repairs are made in certain areas. It's just like a home or a house. If you don't keep up with it, you're going to lose your investment. And that's an investment of a physical plant by the whole community. And the day of reckoning with that is, I think, fast approaching where we're going to have to seriously discuss how we do some of these repairs. And there again, we've tried to put them off in order to come to a balanced budget. But pretty soon, we're going to need to figure out a way to do that. And here again, it's not whether you think the school district is good, bad, or in between, but it's whether the amount of money we as a community have put into these facilities is kept at a level that we will retain that benefit. So I just think that, I appreciate you having it in there, so that means the public has this available. The public can look at this at any time. The public can ask whatever questions they need to. But this is a looming priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Any additional comments? Ms. Escalante? Ms. Jarrett? Mr. Rickman? Any additional comments about that Business Committee report under item nine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Item 10, Policy Committee, policies for first reading. Mr. Monk?
Thank you. I sent out a memorandum to all of the members of the Board pertaining to policy 2340, which is curricular field trips and non-mandatory student trips. As I stated in the memo, I went to in-depth, I looked at the policy and I also looked at all the AGs. It has come to my understanding that there is a packet, and we talk about this at the Policy Committee, there is a packet that each individual has to take and get filled out before any trip is honored, approved, going forward. That packet is very, very extensive, but we found that it was one part of the packet that didn't cover overnight. And I think that was one of the main things that some of our Board members wanted to know and make it, make sure that we address that in the actual policy. That actual procedure comes up under AG. But what we decided at the Policy Committee is to strengthen that. As I stated in the memo, you know, we've been doing overnight trips, so there's no reason to reinvent the wheel here. But we can add stuff to the policy, and the Superintendent is going to work on that piece of the AG that's going to strengthen that part, that's going to address any overnight staying going forward. And I also sent that rough draft to all the Board members. Hopefully, everybody took a look at it. One of the things that we're looking to add to the actual policy is under 2340, subtitle journal requirements for circular curricular field trips and non-curricular field trips, we can add the following language. H, itineraries for all circular field trips and non-mandatory student trips must be presented to the Superintendent for approval by the Board of Education before the trip begins. And then also I, all students and parents must have a signed rules for overnight trips form on file before any student can participate on any overnight field trips. What that form does is that it explains to the parent and also to the student exactly what's going to happen on all overnight trips. As far as assignment rooms, who's going to be in rooms, how it's monitored, the whole nine yards. It addresses their behavior inside the hotel. It addresses electronics inside the hotel. It addresses the hotel property. It addresses them not leaving without supervision. It addresses a curfew. It addresses everything that I, that we felt that would make that trip a success. So we are submitting those additional policies, that, I'm sorry, we're submitting those additional points, H and I, to the actual policy, which we're strengthening. And then, what they add at AG, that Superintendent and her team will put together, I think that will be a Clyde policy that can't go wrong. And it also addresses that if a child, or if a child, if a student gets out of hand, really does something, then they can possibly be sent home at the parent's expense, not at the district's expense. So they got to behave just like they're in school because they're held to the Student Code of Conduct also. So hopefully, that addresses everyone's concerns. This is for the first reading. Please take a look at it, read over it. If you have any suggestions, at our next meeting, we'll address it going forward. Thanks, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. So I embark on my fellow Board members for your due diligence, looking at that policy. And Superintendent, as the Policy Committee Chair stated, we're going to have some additional stuff coming forth with this, right?
Yes. They note.
This is not an action item. This is for first reading. So we can move on. This recommendation of policy number 2340 is submitted for first reading. Anybody else have any additional comments or questions about this? All right. We're going to item 11, Superintendent's comments. Superintendent, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Acting President. And I just want to wish our Board President, Earl Rickman, a speedy recovery. I know he's not feeling well, that's why he's on the phone, so hopefully he'll be better soon. And also, our Board Secretary is nursing the little one at home, so we send our well wishes to her because she's been in the hospital quite a few days, so I want to make sure she's well soon. I did hand you guys, it's a Superintendent Evaluation Checklist, that I had emailed it to you, and hopefully you all have a copy of it. And it's just a summary of each of the points that, or the areas that I will be evaluated on, and also how it's spoken down of how it would be weighted. And you also have a little calendar at the back of it, a timeline of what is due when. And I do owe you a summary this month, so you'll be getting that before the end of the month. And in June, it will be a formal. April is an informal and June is an informal, so I will be getting that to you. I also gave you some information on the tri-county alliance, and it was just highlighting Governor Whitmer's budget recommendation. And so just so you'll see what she has in her budget for the next year. So I think it would be interesting reading for you. Also, you have a letter from Carl Wies, and he is with Middle Cities. And he also gave you just some information concerning, the Senate did pass a bill that would maintain the current student growth from last year for evaluation, and it's supposed to have been at 40 percent. They had added that, what, this year? But now they superseded that with another bill, and the Senate did pass that, so it will remain at 25 percent. And the House is expected to pass it as well. So instead of for the 2018-19 school year evaluation for student growth being at 40 percent, when the House passes it, it will remain at 25 percent. And then, the 40 percent won't go into effect until the 1920 school year, so next year. So we'll, I'll keep you posted on that information. So we'll, I'll keep you posted on that information. Also, Good Friday, this is a short week, so the schools will be closed for Friday. So just asking everyone to be safe, and have a good time, but just make sure you're safe. And with that, hoping that each of you will take care of yourself, and please enjoy your family.
Madam Superintendent, you spoke about Mr. Carl Weiss, the executive director for the letter that he wrote about the student growth. Can you give a definitive or a definition for anybody that's watching this on a telecast, understand what you mean by the student growth?
Okay. Each year, students, well, when students come to school, they are supposed to be learning, and so growing in their knowledge. And it's measured by the testing that's required by the state. We give quizzes and various tests in school, and then the state requires certain tests as well. And with those testing, the state will look at from one year to the next of how much the children are growing. They, it's not expected that a kid would have a zero growth, meaning they didn't learn anything from one year to the next. So with that, the state has required that students have a minimal amount of growth to say that you're an effective school district, or you're effective in teaching or, you know, doing their profession. So with Mount Clemens, instead of doing it as an individual, based on individual teachers, we're looking at it as a district-wide. So kindergarten does have an effect on the evaluation of a twelfth-grade teacher. So we're looking at it collectively. Now, we wouldn't know what the results are individually, but we're looking at it collectively. So that's how Mount Clemens has decided to, and a number of the school districts in that county and the state don't just look at individual teachers or by building, but they're looking at what the whole school district did collectively, with an adverse growth. So again, as a school district, we are expected to teach children, to grow them from one year to the next, from one grade level to the next. And that's why the state gives these tests, to make sure that they can, they have some means to measure how its building of school is performing.
Okay, okay. I say in here, said from twenty-fifteen to sixteen, twenty-sixteen, seventeen, twenty-seven to eighteen, twenty-five percent of the annual year-end evaluation will be based on that student growth.
Right.
And starting in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, that will move to forty percent.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, those assessments are administered, fifty percent of the student growth must be measured using the state, state assessments, correct?
Yes, now that is what they had passed, the Senate and the House had passed last year. And because of giving everyone an opportunity to really vet this and make sure that everybody's on the same page, the Senate passed a bill to say, let's hold off, we're not going to do the forty percent this year. So whatever growth you have, we're only going to let that count as twenty-five percent of your overall evaluation.
Okay, so this year is twenty-five percent, next year is forty percent?
Yes.
And the following year is fifty percent? Is that what we're reading?
I'm not, don't quote me on the twenty, twenty-one.
But in twenty-eighteen, nineteen, beginning with the twenty-eighteen, nineteen school year for core content areas in grades, in session, which state assessment, core content areas, they're going to be administered, fifty percent of student growth must be measured using the state assessment.
Yes, yeah, for the core.
And reason I ask this question, because it's very important, because this is how we get evaluated.
Yes.
So it can bring our school district or our schools back down from a certain tier level of proficiency to being non-professional.
Right.
Anybody got anything else to say or questions about this subject? If not, let's move to committee reports. Athletic ad hoc committee, which be myself, and as you see, there's a track meet going outside, looks like a tournament, looks like it's going very well. Everything's going smoothly in the athletic world, there's a few things we need to get some bugs out of, we'll let the season run through. Superintendent, been very busy lately, so we want to set that, set that to fire when we get the opportunity.
Yes, definitely.
Anybody got any questions or comments or something you want me to look into as a committee chair for the athletic ad hoc committee? Mr. Rickman, you still there?
I'm still here.
We will move on to item B, committee reports, community coalition.
Good evening, board, we have just a couple items for you tonight. Our spring takeback day will be next Saturday, the twenty-seventh, at Wilson Gym from ten to two. Again, we're always trying to collect our twenty pounds of unused expired prescriptions, do not necessarily have to pills, they could be medications or creams, anything that is prescribed to you that we do not want in the hands of our young people, or of course, getting into our waterways and things like that. Bring them to the Wilson Gym, and they will be taken care of and disposed of properly. Last several DEA days, we have been making our least, more than making our twenty-pound goals, so we're quite pleased, is definitely a worthwhile endeavor, which we will continue to do. On a city liaison note, Harrington will finally get repaved. Starting Monday, westbound traffic only from Grash to towards Gross back for the hospital. So the I-SE press releases over to Seminole, they've shared with all the students and staff and parents over there. It's on the marquee at Seminole, it's on the marquee on CAS, and of course, over at City Hall, so we're trying to get the word out that starting Monday through end of June, sounds like mid to end of June, Harrington will be one-way only, and then it'll be westbound. So hopefully Trinity knows about that as well for our busing and all that kind of good stuff. So this job was supposed to be done last year, but because of the problems with six ninety-six, they got back, most of the construction jobs got backed up, Harrington being one of them. But hopefully by end of June, it will be lovely again. So that's all I have, any questions for me? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard Berry, you know, I do have one question. And that takeback, it's not only prescription drugs, but even, even over-the-counter drugs that-
Yes, if they're expired, yes, we'll take over the counter as well, absolutely. Sorry, I did not mention that, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so those who have over-the-counter drugs from Rite Aid, whatever, and they expire?
Please do not take them, give them to us.
Throw them right down here, so don't flush them down the toilet.
No, 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 do not put them in the garbage either.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard Berry.
Thank you.
I'd just like to make one comment on that, as far as that, the construction, that's kind of where I live at. I live right off of Harrington, I'm on, I'm on Cambridge. Just want the, the parents of Seminole Hills just to be careful, because last time they did construction, Kane, the drivers are driving crazy, so that mean Ball Merle, Wellesley, Wellington Crescent will be like freeways, and they will be speeding. So hopefully our local law enforcement will be around the neighborhood, giving out tickets, which will be well deserved, but parents, please.
So we're asking if you need to come eastbound, use CAS, use church, use Metro Parkway, those are probably the only three that go all, I think the only three that go all the way through. From Grash to Gross back, or CAS, church, and Wellington Crescent, or sorry, I went to like sixty mile.
Yeah, sixty mile, yeah.
So if you have to come eastbound for the next month and a half, use one of those three. So it means CAS can be the extra fund for the next month or so, that's okay.
CAS is always fun. All right, thank you, sir. Committee report, item twelve C, curriculum personnel committee, which also be myself. As we all know, we did not have a meeting last Tuesday. I sent everything out to email, was it readable, understandable?
It's two in a row, Doc.
Two in a row, I'm on.
Two in a row, you're on a row.
So, but I will bring something up on this, since this is my committee report, and this is, I think it's time to ask this and put it to the table. We need to make a vote on a date that we're going to meet to vote on the contract situation that we had last week. I hope everybody brought a calendar with them, we got an idea what date would be best for them. Mr. Rickman, you still with us? Mr. Rickman? Okay, have we met, when's the thirty-day mark?
Monday would be the soonest, which would be the twenty-second.
Monday would be the soonest, if we follow the guidelines of the thirty-day window, Monday would be the first available date after that timeline.
You talking about for the special meeting?
Yes, sir, for the special meeting.
Technically, Saturday would be the first legal day.
This Saturday, this week?
No one wants to come in on a Saturday for you.
It's Holy Week two.
Technically, Saturday would be the first day that we could have a special meeting.
They already said they didn't want to.
Exactly. This Easter weekend, Saturday would be the first viable date. Anybody got any other date?
That's all I'm saying, you know, by, by the letter of the law, that technically Saturday would be the first date that we could have that meeting, but like you just stated, it's a holiday weekend, but technically Saturday is the first day we could have a special meeting to deal with that issue.
Okay.
Anytime after that, anytime you get it done.
Right, that's just the first available date.
Yeah, it doesn't mean actually.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the first available.
So basically, any day after Saturday, we can have a special meeting.
Yes.
Can I recommend Tuesday, the twenty-third?
Yes, you can recommend Tuesday, the thirty-third, twenty-third.
Twenty-third, not the thirty-third, the twenty-third.
Tuesday, the twenty-third is a recommendation. Is there any other recommendation of a certain day of the week? Or, what, what was that, Mr. Rickman?
I was trying to, that was, I couldn't hear, somebody put a motion on the floor.
Oh, there was a recommendation?
Just discussing dates.
Discussing dates? Discussing, discussing dates, the recommend, well, not recommendation, but, yeah, recommendation for Tuesday, April twenty-third.
Is that a more, is that a former motion?
That, that is not, that's just throwing it against the wall, see if it stick. Is there any other dates that's worse or better or good? You think we're doing a motion, we're not, we're just kind of discussing right now. Mr. Rickman, Mr. Rickman?
We're talking, we're just throwing dates out right now.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, all right.
Yep, you see what's best for everybody. Mr. Brooly, is that a good date?
This is good for me, actually, because Monday, I won't be in town, I'll be on the plane coming from Arizona, so.
Is Tuesday going to be all right? Because I know how that can work.
No, I'll be, Tuesday's fine for me.
Okay, Ms. Escalante? Mr. Rickman, is April the twenty-third, is that a good or bad date for you?
Uh, it's a good day for me.
Okay, Ms. Jarrett, you brought up the recommendation for the twenty-third, is there a certain time for that meeting?
The evening.
You like the evening time?
Yeah.
Oh, I would like to recommend Tuesday. I moved to have Tuesday, April twenty-third at six-thirty PM as, now is this the special, for the special meeting.
Uh, second.
Okay, oh, one, let me write some notes here, moved by Ms. Jarrett, second by Mr. Rickman. Moved by Ms. Jarrett to have the special meeting, April twenty-third, Tuesday at six-thirty in the PM. Second by Mr. Rickman. Any questions or comments about the motion on the floor? Seeing there being none, please call the roll.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman? Mr. Brooly? Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Motion carried. So we will have a special meeting Tuesday, April twenty-third at six-thirty PM, in this room, I believe, right? Right here at this location. All right, let's move on. Committee reports, educational foundation, Mr. Rickman?
Uh, the report, uh, the educational foundation is, uh, the scholarship applications should be available at the counseling, in the counseling office. I spoke with the chair of the, of the foundation, and they stated that, that, that process should be available in the counseling office.
Okay, so, Mr. Rickman just put out there that the educational foundation, there's some scholarships that are available for our students, it should be available at the counselor office, Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
And if you can't find them over there, just ask, they'll, they'll have them, because they will be there. So they're supposed to be there, so that's, that educational foundation scholarship is available for all students in the Mount Clemens District, and there's money on the table.
All graduating seniors.
All graduating seniors, that's right, because you can't be a ninth, tenth, eleventh graduate or alumni. So all graduating seniors, there's a scholarship available for you. Anything else, Mr. Rickman?
That's all, that's it.
Legislation?
There was no meeting.
No meeting, thank you, sir. Policy committee, Mr. Monk?
Well, I sent out a memo to all of my board members, hopefully you read everything. We've talked about second readings, first readings, so I have entertaining questions on that. One thing I do want to bring up is that, when there's another thing that we talked about at our policy meeting when we met, and I'm happy to see that we've, we've, we've kind of followed up on that, thank you superintendent, there, we got a memo, and there's going to be a, on Wednesday, which actually was today, and it says, good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to advise everyone that the police academy will be conducting an active shooting training session here in the middle school this Wednesday, so that happened today. Glad to see that. You know, we've been talking about that and talking about that, you know, and every time we see these instances on TV, the one thing, one company nominated, they always say, we never thought it happened to us. So I'm glad to see us, you know, having some training, getting prepared, because you never know. So we want to make sure we're taking every precaution, have the plan set up. You know, we said that, you know, the plans don't need, need to be publicly devolved, uh, devolved, because, you know, you don't know who's listening, but, you know, as a board, you know, we've asked that we can cut the breath on, you know, everything, because, you know, we live in a community. So parents call us, and hopefully, knock on wood, none of that, none, none of that happens, but we, we will be able to point parents in the right direction and give them the proper information. So I'm glad to see that we've, um, had some training on that, and we'll continue to have some training on that. So I thank you for that. Other than that, that is my report, any more entertaining questions?
And just so you know, they did do it on Tuesday as well, after they sent the memo, they came in later and said, oh, it's on Tuesday as well, so it was yesterday as well, with the training.
More training, better.
Absolutely.
Any questions, comments, anything for Mr. Monk? I got one thing I want to say, Mr. Monk.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's early in the season, early in the year to give these accolades, but you're doing an amazing job in this policy meeting, I'm going to just say that.
Thanks, sir, I got, I got, I got a team, I got a team, not me.
Use some attaboys, all right, you're doing good, seriously.
Thanks, sir, I'll pass that along to the team members.
All right, give it to the team.
I'm not taking credit.
All right, we're going to move on to our board comments. We'll start over here with Mr. Monk.
Uh, no comment.
Doggone it, Mr. Monk, thanks a lot. All right, Mr. Brooly?
Um, I will follow Mr. Monk's tradition tonight, because I already made my comments about the priorities for the physical plant.
Two for two, two for two, Ms. Escalante?
I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season this weekend, and enjoy some time with your families. Kids, don't eat too much Easter candy, be safe, enjoy the day off, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Ms. Jarrett?
Well, my first comment, and I was thinking about this today and stuff, because I was working on some things, is teamwork makes the dream work, just remember that, that we're a team, and we work together. No matter what, we all work together. I want to take a stanza from the optimist creed, and so the students, the parents and everything, think only of the best, to work only for the best, and to expect only the best. And happy holidays, and once a bather, always a bather.
I gotta say, she did all three looks, all three slogans, Mr. Monks, Mr. Rickmans. And I, I began with Ms. Jarrett.
Yes, first of all, I apologize for not being there physically, uh, but I'm pretty sure y'all didn't want me there physically at the meeting. I would like to send kudos out to Ms. Jarrett for her unwavering support of the robotics club. And I'd like to, uh, give kudos out to Mr. Javon Hannah for his recognition as a student athlete, being honored by the State of Michigan Athletic Association for his accomplishments on the basketball court.
Wow, that's great.
Anything else, Mr. Rickman?
Those are my comments, sir.
Thank you, sir. I was saying earlier, Mr. Rickman thought I called on him. Teamwork is dream work, like that, once a bather, always a bather. And you know what Mr. Monk's saying, so we're going to leave it alone like that.
That's my thing, when I was president of the National School Board Association.
Yes, he was, I remember those days. I have no additional comments, except for that, I know we're going to move forward, we're looking forward to this meeting on Tuesday. Hopefully, everybody is well-fed, not real tired, and they can make a nice, round decision. Those are my comments, motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second, a second.
Moved by Mr. Monk, second by Ms. Jarrett. Moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Ms. Jarrett. Any additional comments and questions about this motion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mr. Brooly?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes. Motion carried. We're adjourned.